Well, good afternoon. We'll get started with today's presentation and study session. I believe we're going to talk about professional learning communities. Get an update on that. So, Michelle, do you want to?
I do. So, before Executive Director Lobo starts, I just want to acknowledge her leadership around these efforts. And Carla would never, never, ever kind of elevate herself, but I'm going to do this for her. She has taken over the leadership of our Curriculum Professional Development Department. And the grace and the expertise in which she has connected a lot of large systems pieces across our district has just been really incredible. So, while she'll give credit to a lot of people tonight, and I know that Dr. Cruz will as well, I just wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank Carla for her leadership in our organization. And we're very, very lucky to have her on our team. So, Carla, thank you.
Thank you. That is very kind. But the people doing the work in the room are out here in the audience, so.
And I knew you would say that, too.
Board President Christensen, members of the board, Superintendent Whitney, it's my pleasure to be with you this afternoon to provide you with an update on professional development with the focus on professional learning communities, which has been one of our focuses for this year. The goal of all professional development is to impact student learning in the classroom. For this reason, each aspect of our educational system needs to be considered when providing professional development to our staff. Professional development supports staff in a variety of settings, and you can see, these are many of them. This year, we have been intentional about addressing the needs within the various layers of our instructional organization, beginning with administrator-professional development and support, and then continuing by focusing, by pushing into the buildings, which is why many of our staff is here, with all-staff trainings, leadership teams, or guiding coalitions, instructional coaches, all with the goal of impacting the classroom. In addition, there has been an intentional effort to weave a leadership component into the professional development of our administrators, principals, and our teacher leaders. This is when accessories don't support your presentation. We have provided support this year in all forms of these models that are up on the screen for you. Our instructional coaches and TOSSAs support individual teachers by facilitating, planning with, and modeling in the classroom. Our staff works in collaboration with educational experts, such as Dr. Cruz, who's with us today, and to support school-wide understanding and implementation of instructional initiatives, as well as working with small groups such as leadership teams or guiding coalitions and many of our EL task forces, which are in most, if not all, of our schools. So, the focus for this year, and you can see these are the bullets, includes the following topics. The focus is important because we need to be intentional about providing the layered support for these initiatives throughout our system. This means structured and thoughtful PD that supports a common understanding and then offers support throughout the system at all its levels. In the previous slide, you could see that Tier 1 was a focus for the school year, and collaboration through the PLC process is key to improving Tier 1 instruction for all students. Collaboration at high levels is also key and essential in improving student outcomes. And because our focus today is on professional learning communities, what we've included for you is you have a little booklet there, and it includes, and it doesn't include all, but many of the professional development opportunities that we offer in our department, and many that are provided by our TOSSAs and our administrators throughout the school district and their, throughout the year. So, again, this doesn't encompass everything, but many of the PD opportunities that we provide. So, that just gives you an idea of how busy our folks are. The idea of improving schools by developing professional learning communities is currently in vogue. As a matter of fact, I've been in front of you speaking about PLCs before. And people use this term now to describe every maginal combination of individuals with an interest in education. It could be a grade-level teaching team, a school committee, a whole high school department, an entire school district, a state department of education, and so on. But in fact, the term has been used so broadly that it's in danger of losing all meaning. True professional learning communities, however, engage in an ongoing cycle of collaboration and inquiry that addresses those four questions. And one of the funny things I usually say to people is if it's, if, if you're not addressing, if you're meeting and it's not around these four questions, it's just a meeting. It probably isn't collaboration around a PLC. This is an example of the careful planning that took place in order to support staff at every level throughout the instructional organization. And this is just a snapshot. This is another example of the elementary schedule to support staff in their PLC journey. Schools began with a building of an understanding of the why, with follow-up support in PLC teams in the building with feedback and coaching. And so, what Dr. Cruz had the opportunity to do is he was in many of the PLCs and gave each individual team coaching and feedback with regards to, to the process. It was very helpful. So, we are very fortunate to have staff in the room who can also speak to their experiences in this process. So, this is one of those times as well, and this is Dr. Cruz actually at Chihuahua. And I believe this is what their EL task force, is that correct, Mr. Walworth? This is another opportunity at Chihuahua, and this was on a different date. And you can see, Mr., I told him, Mr. Walworth, that he was going to be a superstar. He's in many of our pictures this afternoon with Dr. Cruz. And in this time, he was working with students, so they were able to build that into a schedule. I had the opportunity with Shelley Hatch to sit in, and it was, I was very inspired as well through his personal story. So, and he was very excited that he got to work with students as well. He usually works with just the adults. In addition to effective collaboration, we have also expanded our support for the development and appropriate use of Common Formative Assessments. These are some days that support has been provided to our educational leaders in an effort to provide support to each building. And when I talk about our educational leaders, I'm talking about our principals, our administrators, and our teacher leaders as well. Common formative assessments are a key and necessary component for grade level and content team collaboration, all of which are part of the PLC journey. So, I will read you this quote. "The more you teach without finding out who understands the information and who doesn't, the greater the likelihood that only already proficient students will succeed." So, we are very fortunate to have Dr. Cruz with us today. He will be providing you with an update on the great work happening in our district and some recommendations as we move forward. So, Dr. Cruz has, this is actually incorrect, he has over 30 years in education. He's worked at all three levels. And one of the great things about the work that he has done with us is that he has a lot of credibility with our staff. He was also a principal of a large comprehensive high school with very similar demographics to those that we have here in Pasco. So, you know, he's able to make those connections for staff with regard to, because he not only, he was also a principal and was able to move the needle at his school and raise the achievement scores for his students through this process. So, it is my pleasure to introduce him and welcome him up here to speak with you today.
Thank you very much. (applause).
Yes, the right side.
Okay, got you. Okay, thank you. It's okay. Good evening, members of the board and members of the Pasco community. My name is Luis Cruz. I'm very honored to be here with you. Pasco has become like a second home. I'm very happy to report I can get around without navigation now. And absolutely, I'm a big fan of your airport because it's very simple, but more so, I enjoy coming to Pasco. I have the privilege and honor of working with school districts all over the country and throughout Canada. And Pasco has easily become, if not the, one of the most favorable places for me to go to, simply because they're doing something very revolutionary here, and that's they're implementing what they're learning. I enjoy coming back because every time I come back, they are making this transition from what we call a traditional school system to that of a professional learning community. So, I want to pick up where Ms. Lobo's left off, and, oops, did I click the wrong button here? Want to help me here, Carla?
You can just right-click, and it'll...
Right-click here?
Yeah.
And it'll move forward?
Yes, it should. Oh, wait. Left-click.
Left, ah, okay, left-click. It's okay, very good.
You're upright.
All right. So, I wanted to, I wanted to really sort of expand on what a professional learning community is and what it's not, right? And so, a professional learning community continues to be, I want you to imagine, it's an ongoing process. We often talk about this not being a race, but a marathon. There is no ending to this quest to accelerate learning every year. We all remember a quote from a movie back in the 80s that talked about greed is good, right? And I often say that if you work in Wall Street and you say greed is good, that's probably not a good thing. But greed is good in our profession because we want more kids learning at high levels. We want more kids succeeding. I'm sure you want more kids graduating and going on to choosing college or a career. So, in order for that to happen, we have to understand that we cannot rely on a traditional school system that wasn't designed for the kids that we serve. We're going to have to change that system. And changing that system means we're going to have to change policies. We're going to have to change practices, and we're going to have to change procedures that have been around forever when it comes to our educational system. So, becoming a professional learning community is understanding that. It's understanding that we have to engage in something called an ongoing process whereby educators throughout the school are collaborating, and they are involved in these recurring cycles of what we call collective inquiry. And collective inquiry is basically looking at data and not accepting data for what it is, but questioning, why is that data where it's at, right? One of the themes that we've learned is that hope is not a strategy. Hope is good, but it's not a strategy. If you want something to change, you're going to have to have some really long, thought-out sessions of collaboration around, what do we need to do to make a change for the positives? And so, we do this because the most precious resource that we have in our community are the students represented by, I believe, two high school students here, that we have to invest in if we want our community and our world to be better. Those aren't just words used to influence and motivate people. Those are really the words that I still live by, and many of your educators, if not all of them, live by as well. Here's what it's not. If that's what a professional learning community is, here's what it's not. It's not just another meeting. I think Ms. Lobo said it correctly when she said that if one of those four questions is not topic of conversation, you're not collaborating. We call that co-blaborating. Because they're not engaged in the right discussions that lead to producing the kind of evidence and learning that we want to see. It is not a book study. A lot of people think that because they read a book, that that makes them somehow more equipped to change a system that needs changing. Well, we know that ideas don't help kids, actions do. And so, it's more than just a gathering of educators' lesson planning. At its core, a professional learning community has a relentless focus on student achievement and student learning, and what adults at each school must do to continuously increase evidence of learning for all students. So, with that in mind, there are three big ideas that we have been studying, learning, and I'm very happy to say implementing. One is that, the first big idea that we need to embrace if we're going to become a professional learning community, is the idea that we exist to ensure, not offer, but ensure that all students learn at high levels. So, we have defined two words that you see there as the following. All means any child who one day is going to be an independent adult, and high levels of learning means grade level or higher. If we can achieve every student in your school district graduating at high school level or higher, that would be a tremendous advantage, not just for them, but for your community. The second thing that we do is that we help all students learn at high levels. We understand that that's going to require a collaborative and collective focus, like the things we've talked about, but focused on variables that we can control versus the ones we can't control. Poverty, for example, is something that exists in your community. That is not a factor that we can definitely deal with. We have to accept it and understand that those kids can learn at high levels, but there are certain things we need to do differently in order for those kids to be successful. In addition to those kids who don't come from poverty, all means both. We have to make sure that since 70% of your students almost fall into that realm of free and reduced lunch, we have to make sure that we're doing what we have to do to make them successful. Collaboration is the way we get there. And we will use a focus on results, evidence of learning, in other words, data, to ensure learning for all is taking place. So, one of the things that we've learned over time is that, we have a little saying that I've had them say a couple of times, and it comes from the world of politics in that it says that in God we trust, everyone else needs data. So, we need to be able to make sure that our efforts are actually producing results. If they're not producing results, that doesn't make us lazy people. It doesn't make us bad people, but it makes us ineffective. And we have to continuously strive to be effective. These three big ideas are at the core of everything that we've been learning. Now, in order for this to happen, we're going to have to make a distinction between something called a leadership team and a guiding coalition. When I first came to Pasco, I had the opportunity to work with many leadership teams. But I'm very happy to report that in the majority of your schools, that transition from traditional leadership team to that of a 21st century guiding coalition is happening. And here's the difference between both. In most schools that I visit, leadership teams are talking about how to manage the building. Now, I think we can all agree that managing a building is very, very important, but it's not at the core of what we're trying to do. A guiding coalition doesn't just manage a building. They look at data and they ask themselves, what do we need to provide our faculty and staff with in order for these kids, who have historically been marginalized with regard to learning, to learn? So, there are three things that they do. Number one, they guide and unite and support the faculty and staff at the school throughout this change process from traditional school to that of a professional learning community. They also embrace something called research-based best practices, hence the eventual implementation of what I like to call the science of our profession. So, just like medical doctors have their science, and engineers have their science, we have our science as well. There is research-based practices that make it very clear, if schools do this, it produces results. But if schools don't do this, then it doesn't produce results. So, we're studying this science, and last but not least, we keep the staff working collectively to ensure learning for all students. So, at Stevens Middle School, for example, this is a picture of the guiding coalition. And notice what it says as far as their purpose. The purpose of Stevens Guiding Coalition is to guide, unite, and support both staff and students to create an optimal environment for learning by embracing best practices and to promote a student-centered culture where staff work to ensure learning and growth for all students. So, that purpose statement is at the core of why they exist. They come together, these teachers and administrators, continuously to talk about what needs to happen at our school with regard to having inherited a system never designed for the diverse student populations that you serve, so that learning does take place. This is a very effective team. This is a very committed team. The Principal Martinez's leadership has been remarkable with regard to leading her team. And this team is going to be a team that continuously focuses on the learning and non-learning that is happening at the school. I've also had the privilege of working with this team here. This team is very, very, I've got to be honest with you, very impressive in the form of such a large high school, but the right kind of focus and the right kind of people coming together. So, we have administrators here and teachers here, who will all come together to basically declare that leadership can no longer be the responsibility of just administration. Teachers have to be part of this process. One of the things that's happening in your school district that's most impressive is the amazing amount of teacher leadership stepping forward with regard to this work. Now, this is not a guiding coalition, but this is an addition to a guiding coalition. At Chihuahua, what they decided to do was they have a guiding coalition, but because their data says very clearly that kids learning English as a second language are not learning at a level that they can accept, they've also created this as, in addition to the guiding coalition. This is their EL task force. Here is their purpose. The purpose of the EL task force at Chihuahua High School is to continually increase evidence of learning for EL students by assessing learning, advocating for research-based practices, including cultural responsiveness, instructional delivery, and overall equity. I've seen teams like this develop in Texas. Chicago has a couple of teams I work with, Indiana. This was probably the most profound purpose statement that I've seen created, because they make it very clear that this is what they're going to use to make sure that these kids, that the data is saying, are not learning right now, do learn. So, just to be clear, they have a guiding coalition who's making sure that learning is happening for all kids. But because this particular cohort of kids continuously are not striving at levels that they can accept, they've added another team called the EL task force. They work very well together, and I expect great things in the very near future. Earlier today, I had the opportunity to work with Robert Frost Elementary. And this is just off the presses. This is brand new, so it's not in the pretty PowerPoint. But this is what they came up with. It took them about an hour, hour and a half to come to consensus that the purpose of the guiding coalition at Robert Frost is to unite and support all staff to continuously maximize student learning in a collaborative culture fueled by research-based best practices. So, the teachers were very happy, as were the administrators, that they left this afternoon with an identity. Now, what needs to happen is we need to make sure they know what to do with that identity. And once again, it's moving from traditional school that wasn't designed to serve all kids to a professional learning community designed exactly to do that. These teams are very powerful. And so, in addition to learning how to collaborate, these leadership teams, i.e. guiding coalitions, are learning how to also lead. The latest book that I've written with Dr. Anthony Mohammed talks about the golden rule of effective leadership in schools. And so, what guiding coalitions throughout your district are learning is the golden rule, which is support precedes accountability. We cannot hold teachers and staff accountable until we've given them the right amount of support. So, our support comes in the form of making sure people understand why change is needed, making sure people trust those advocating for change, and making sure people know how to change. But in addition to those three rational reasons why people often resist change, they are also learning what they must do to hold people accountable to change. One of the things that we've discussed is that, the research is out there, it's been out there for decades, on what schools need to do to help kids learn. Failure to implement what is based in science can simply be called malpractice. So, we're not going to allow our kids in Pasco to not receive the research that we know can help them break free from the cycle of poverty and have a better life, or access that college they've always wanted to access. So, what we discussed as leaders is that when leaders fail to address individuals or cohorts of individuals that do not want to implement science, there's only one way that we can describe that, and that's aiding and abetting malpractice. And so, how we go about holding people accountable, always professionally, always respectfully, is something that we're also exploring as leaders. This is all happening because the truth of the matter is we're embracing the fact that more than half of the kids in your school district fall into this world, the poverty cycle. So, in addition to studying leadership and studying what it means to become a PLC, we're really embracing the fact that when kids grow up in poverty, they walk into schools with significant disadvantages in education and skills. What your teams are starting to understand is that they cannot allow these kids to leave with significant disadvantages in education and skills. We want to make sure that kids that leave Pasco leave with the things that they didn't have when they entered the school, so that they don't struggle to get a job, they do break out of the cycle of poverty, and they have families in the future that are not in this cycle of poverty. I know a little bit about this because this is what I grew up in when I grew up in Los Angeles. I'm very happy to say that my parents did what they could, but it was teachers and administrators at the schools I attended that allowed me to break free. And the most beautiful thing about our profession is that we don't just make a difference in the life of one generation, because now I have grandchildren who are not in the cycle of poverty, because I have a daughter who's a nurse who was able to gain what she needed in order to never go back to this very tough and sometimes very challenging place. We also have been talking about all the complexities of collaboration, and I'm not going to try to explain this, but I can tell you is that what you see in yellow are the behaviors that teachers in your school district are embracing, leaders in your school district are embracing. It is not easy to simply address those four simple questions. A lot of people look at those questions, say, well, how hard can those questions be to answer? As you can see, they're very, very complex. There's a lot of lingo and terminology here that only we understand as a profession with regard to Common Formative Assessments, with regard to how to analyze data, with regard to differentiating instruction. So, this is the process that people have been studying in addition to leadership, because this, we know, based on research, will definitely help those students that come into our school with those disadvantages, but also help those kids that don't come in with disadvantages. So, again, this is the formula that we're using to really study what collaboration looks like, and the actions in yellow that you see there that are supposed to help. We've also been studying what this might look like, how might they present this to their faculty and staff. I understand that you've been exposed to this picture before, but maybe not the third picture. We talk about this being what traditional schools do on the far left, good people who work hard, that provide all their kids equal, but that what we're going to have to embrace is something called equity, which is the middle picture. Equity is not equal, but fair. Are there some kids in your community who are going to need two boxes instead of one? My daughters represented there are the kids, the ones that don't need boxes because they have mom and dad who can help them at home. So, we want to make sure that we understand the relationship between picture one, picture two, but that we definitely embrace picture three, because what is picture three? Picture three is us doing away with what's called the system that does not allow some kids to be successful. And so, your teams have been studying what that system is composed of. We already know that it's not done purposely, but we do know that we have to chip away at that wall as much as possible so that our kids have access to what life has to offer with regard to a life where they can live their dream and do the things they want to do because of the education they gained in Pasco. So, Rick DeFord, my mentor, who's no longer with us, he's in heaven building PLCs, I'm sure, often reminded educators that the key to improve learning for students is job-embedded learning for the adults. Your district has done a marvelous job of making sure that educators have an opportunity to learn, and slowly but surely, we're seeing what I call revolutionary, they're implementing what they're learning. And that, to me, is very powerful. In closing, let me just sum up really quickly what your school district is doing very well. You are supporting your school-side teams with investments in both technical and cultural change needed to become a strong professional learning community. Let me break that down a little bit for you. Technical is, we know what to do. Culture is, we know how to lead. So, one of the things that we've discussed is the fact that oftentimes, well-intended, hard-working educators have what's called a fixed mindset, where they refuse to change because it's so uncomfortable. One of the things that we're embracing here as a team is that uncomfortable is part of change. What we have to make sure change isn't, is that it's not something that is going to be so inconvenient or so incomprehensible that we do not embrace the uncomfortableness of change, right? We're also building leadership capacity beyond administration. This is probably the most exciting part of this work, because to see teachers stepping forward and saying, we have to make sure that this doesn't become a fad, instead we make it a movement, is powerful. I often remind teachers that principals come and go, but we shouldn't end our movement with their departure. Every principal that a school inherits should be a contribution to something that we keep going regardless of who the principal is. Teacher leadership is really becoming to be one of the most important assets of your school district. And you are attempting to reconfigure certain policies and practices so as to better support your goal of becoming a professional learning community. Slowly but surely, you're looking at district policies and site policies that might need a change in order to accommodate and help these group of kids that need your assistance. What is some advice moving forward? I would advise you to continue to promote high levels of learning for all your schools, but be aware that each school has its own unique culture. Oftentimes, I see well-intentioned, hard-working district and boards of education want to make everything the same across the board. That is dangerous because not every school is the same, and not every school has the same culture. So, what you might want to do is have high expectations for all your schools, but understand that sometimes they might have to take different paths to get there. As long as they get there, that's what's important. Continue to promote adult learning for district and site leaders so as to ensure a strong focus district-wide. This is something that is going to be critical moving forward, that not just site people continue to learn what this work looks like, but that our district leaders continue to learn how to best support sites in their quest to become a professional learning community. And last but not least, to continue to embrace... And last but not least, to continue to embrace your community and student diversity as an asset, realizing our traditional school system was not designed for the success of all students. I often say that our traditional school system was great when we didn't have a global economy and when not all kids needed to learn. The world is different today, and so we need to make sure that we align our district policies, practices, and procedures with this immense diversity. I compliment the fact that very soon you're going to be embracing bilingualism through your dual-language program. I think that's just another amazing aspect of Pasco. On a personal note, it's been an absolute honor and privilege to work with the folks here. I get to work with educators all over. I don't say that everywhere I go. I can't. But the truth of the matter is that it's very powerful when you see people implementing what they're learning. My family is at Disneyland today. I'm on spring break. But I thought it was okay for me to take the day because the truth of the matter is you needed to hear the amazing work that your people are doing, continue to support them, and know that over in Los Angeles, you have a number-one fan cheering for you. Because it's interesting, when people ask me what Pasco is like, and I tell them, "It's kind of like LA," to be honest with you. It looks a lot like Los Angeles. They find it hard to believe, so I have to take pictures sometimes of all the Mexican restaurants you have driving around your community. But I'm very quick to let them know that they're hard-working people, doing some great things, and I look forward to including more of you in my next book when I write about school districts that are getting it right. So thank you for your time, and if there are any questions that you'd like to ask, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cruz. Appreciate you coming and sharing this with us. It's certainly been enlightening for us. Board members, any questions for Dr. Cruz?
And we also have people who are in the audience.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation, the information. It's very inspiring, and there are a number of things that were quite impressive that I hadn't thought about before. I have a question about how this is implemented. Can you go back to that chart, the really busy chart? Actually, that caught my eye then.
If I can figure out how to go back. Yeah, I'll let you handle that, Carla.
My question is around, it seems like one of the challenges in public education, and that certainly is a concern I've heard in our community and in our state, as well as the state has changed some regulations around essentially providing high-cap education for kids that are... So you have those two at the end, when learning has not occurred, when learning has already occurred. And it seems like it's very challenging in our, certainly in elementary school, if you have 20 children in your classroom and you have some that have it all down and need some more, some enhancement or enrich and deepen learning. You have, you know, a lot right in the middle that we're right on track with what we're teaching, and then we have some that are struggling. How, what are the strategies, or what are we doing as a district or directly that we're doing to address that? Because that's a concern. We've heard that, okay, well, we're always just aiming at that 70% of the middle or 80% of the middle, and we're not really challenging the kids that need to be challenged, and some of them get bored with school.
Absolutely. That's a great question.
And then we also need resources to help the kids that are behind or struggling, no matter what grade or school we're talking about. And so how do we address that? It seems like that is the overwhelming burden at a fundamental level.
Absolutely, no. What we're learning here is that question three and four often come together. Obviously, we need to address the non-learning that some kids are experiencing because they need additional time or additional support. But we also can't forget about the kids who are learning, and we can take further, right? So we often call question three intervention, and question four extension. These things can happen at the same time. Now, let me share with you how they can't happen. They cannot happen when one teacher is trying to do both, because that teacher will have a nervous breakdown eventually sometime around November, right? So what we've been discussing is what this might look like when a team of teachers is addressing that kind of phenomenon, right? So for example, if the five of us teach Algebra I, and we've all agreed what's essential for kids in Algebra I to learn, and we are providing best-first instruction, there's always going to be some kids who don't learn it. What if we do this? What if the three of us address the kids who didn't learn it, while you two address the kids who did learn it and take it further than where they need to be, right? I saw this happen at one high school with something called the slope-intercept form. That still gives me nightmares when I... I'm a history teacher, so... But it was fascinating to see how exactly what I just described happened. So they had a period of the day where the kids who got it went to a teacher who provided them extension. So what was this teacher doing in that room? He had created little roller coasters with Legos, and kids had to use the slope-intercept form to determine, as roller coaster engineers, how much of a slope a particular drop could have before the car fell off. See, those kids learned the formula. They were extending their learning. In the meantime, those kids who hadn't learned the formula were in different rooms, learning the formula that they needed to learn. Now, two weeks later, it might be different. Two weeks later, you moved on to a different concept. I'm demonstrating that I'm getting it, so I go to the extension teachers. While the kids that maybe got it two weeks earlier and are not getting this new concept go to where the intervention is taking place. So the key is going to be for us to break away from what's been cemented in our minds as, "I'm the only one in charge of my kids." So the big transition is moving from, "These are my kids," to, "These are our kids." And getting adults to embrace that is sometimes challenging because we've been conditioned to believe that there's only one way of doing this work, the way I experienced it when I went to school, which is one teacher, 20 groups of kids. So we're trying to break away from traditional structures to one that is much more indicative of a professional learning community.
Yeah, that's fantastic. I won't put anyone on the spot, but is anyone, any teachers or administrators would be willing to share how something similar to that has happened at any of our schools?
Well, I didn't speak for Ochoa. We have two days a week that we use intervention-extension time. So I meet in my math POC. We've gone through unpacking the standards, so we really understand what the standard means, what does a student at seventh grade math need to be able to do. And then we start looking at what's the eighth-grade standard that relates to that, so we know where to push the kids next. And then just this morning, I had a group of students that, none of them were from my block class, but they were in there, working, about 15 of them with me, on distributed property. I had this teacher across the hall was working on students with slightly more difficult distributed property with all rational numbers. One downstairs was working on how to combine like terms. It's related to all about that next step. And then I had a, we had a teacher that was working with extensions on just how do we put it all together in an equation to solve it with distributed property, taking it through that whole process. And that's our every Tuesday and Thursday, if you want to stop by.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. I think from what I caught of your presentation here, it mirrors the vision and the direction that this board's been working towards for the last three or four years. And we're not implementers on our part here. And it's nice to see the vision and how you would go and implement. And you're able to say it much more eloquently than us, so appreciate all the work you've been doing in the district. I have a question. You have the questions up here.
Yes.
Is it important, and I just heard our educator from Ochoa there say they're unpacking the standards at the building level.
Yes.
Are the districts that are successful in doing this, do they do a lot of that work at the building level? Or is it done at the district level in, number one, first answering the question at the top there? What do we want our students to learn? Because the board's been talking about that quite a bit. And what would your take be on that?
That's a great question, and thank you for answering, for asking that question. So the research and my experience says that it happens at the site level. And I'll tell you why. Many traditional school districts will do exactly what you say. They will do the identifying of standards that are essential and unpacking. They will hand that out to teacher teams throughout their school district. And that binder will sit on the desk for months at a time because they didn't own the process, because they were not engaged in the process. We tend to do what we own, right? Now, that doesn't mean that a district office can offer recommended pacing guides or recommended, you look at these. But in the end, it's teachers at that level who are going to have to own this process. And the only way they can own it is they dig deep and get their hands dirty with the things that need to happen with regard to identifying essentials and unpacking them, right? Now, not too far from here, Hermiston School District. I had the pleasure of working there many years ago. What they decided to do is they started at the site level, and then at one point, what happened was their district decided, okay, we have kids that are moving from this fourth grade to that fourth grade throughout the year. They had a lot of kids moving in between, so we don't want to short-change any child. So what they did is they invited, for example, let's say, the Algebra I team or representatives from the Algebra I team from Chihuana, the representatives of Algebra I from Pasco, and the Algebra I teacher that you have from your continuation school, right, to a meeting where they said, "Okay, each of you have identified your essentials, and you've unpacked them. Can we come to consensus on what Algebra I in the district looks like?" And then from there, they created a, "This is our guaranteed and viable curriculum." But as you can see, it starts from the bottom up, meaning from people that are in the trenches, who really understand this process. And then district leadership puts it all together with regard to conformity, if you will, or an understanding of what that looks like across schools. So now that if a child moves from Chihuahua to Pasco in Algebra I, the essentials are the essentials, and it came from the people that are doing the work.
And if I could expand on that. So that was actually a conversation that we had. And Dr. Cruz recommended that we bring Maria and Nelson in to work with us. So that has been the work. And that's probably something, as you can see, that has nodded the word that we really delved into this year, is taking... And so what our administrators, and they can speak to it as well, and our teachers, is she has taken and trained instructional coaches. We actually just had our high schools and our middle schools here last week, and they are unpacking every single standard at the building level. And that's us bringing people back so they're doing so that they own it, and then they understand it. They're identifying in their grade level or content teams. And then we're coming and bringing them back so that we can have district-wide consensus around that. And one of the reasons we did that, and he teases me, says, "Sometimes you take my advice." By the way, we always take his advice. And doing that because I knew that it was really important to engage people in that work. And so we are kind of neck-deep in that work right now, and we're almost wrapping it up for our middle schools and our high schools, and we're about halfway through in our elementaries. And I'm sure that there's people that can speak to that. But that has been a real big aha. And I think the clarification in that, that we've kind of brought to clarity, we have, you're aware that we have all these new, we've had all these new instructional materials over the past several years. And so what we need to do is you can't, we can't and we shouldn't be teaching instructional materials cover to cover. But what you do, we do need to do is say, again, identify those essential standards. What in Algebra I does every child need to know when they walk out of algebra class? What does every child need to know in third grade English Language Arts across the district? And high expectation for every student. So that's what the work that our teachers are doing, and you can see them nodding. And so then what you do is you go back, of course, are your instructional materials important? Absolutely. But then you go back and you say, okay, chapter two. Oh, my gosh, nothing in here that aligns with what my kids absolutely must know. I'm not going to cheat chapter two. But look at chapter three and four. That's gold. That is a priority or an essential standard. So that really becomes the roadmap, so that guaranteed viable curriculum are those essential standards that our staff identifies because they're the ones doing the work and then owning that process. And so that's what we've been doing this year with our folks.
Thank you. One more follow-up question on that. So it sounds like it's important to unpack the standards, like you say. And then we want to have, I'll call it like a cross-pollination across the district so that we have consistency or fidelity across the district. What, and you've looked at how our organization is set up. Where does that, I heard that administrators can help cross-pollinate there, but where are districts that succeed in this cross-pollination and having fidelity and consistency? Is it driven by people like instructional coaches getting together and sharing what they see in the schools? Or is it driven by administration getting together? Or is it driven by the teams that you talked about here at each school getting together? But how do you implement that? I mean, it's a good idea, and I think for years, we've done a good job at unpacking what each individual school thinks the standards are, what their schools should do. But I don't believe, from my view, that we've made lots of progress. And I respect what's going on. But what advice would you give us on how to use the people and the staff that we have to get that cross-pollination?
Yeah, it's an excellent question. So let me say this first. It sounds like what teams are creating is a list of standards, but it's not a list. It's an actual process, right? So allow me, I'm a former teacher, so I need to do this walking thing. So when teams identify those essentials and they unpack them, right? Then they proceed to look at the academic vocabulary that comes with each of those standards. And they look at the rigor that each of those standards need to be taught. I mean, they're looking at all kinds of intricacies there. And then they start their teaching. And then they're intervening, and they're extending for some kids, as our colleague explained, right? And then there's something called smarter balance that they look at. We call that the summative assessment, or the autopsy, if you will. We look at the results of that autopsy. We see where we did well. But then we see where the kids didn't do well. So watch what happens. We go back. All right, did we unpack that standard right? Did we miss an essential? Did we miss some academic vocabulary? Was our rigor in line with what we needed? So I told them the other day that my favorite word is tweak. We've got to go back and tweak, and we've got to twerk, tweak. Until that pipeline is so strong and giving us the result that we need, we never stop going back and tweaking it, right? So I wanted to first clarify, we're not asking for a list. We're asking for a process to be understood, the one I just described here, yes. Now, who oversees this, right? So there's many players involved. I've seen districts do it differently. A very successful school district in New Mexico that I worked with, Los Luna School District, I see you doing similar things in that you're investing in these instructional coaches. Now, one thing that we didn't say is that every collaborative team at every school has someone called a facilitator, right? And the facilitator's job is to receive continuous training throughout the year, offered by district and site, that allows me to go back and lead my Algebra I team in the manner that that picture describes. Does that make sense? Because I can't learn all those yellow things in one sitting. So I'm learning, implementing, learning in it. So every school has these facilitators, yes. When it's time to cross-pollinate, as you say, I'm going to bring the facilitators, the fourth-grade facilitators from our elementary schools together. We can't, we don't have it so that all of them can show up. But I've been part of this process. I know what we're doing. I know what we identify as essential. So district obviously is allowing there to be a space, along with instructional coaches, that allow them to now come together and say, okay, let's hear what the essential standards are throughout fourth grades, and let's bring it together now so that we can say, this is what we expect us to learn in fourth grade if they attend the Pasco School District. These are the most essential parts of those things, right? I think that over time, it's going to be revealed. What I'm finding is that this amazing leadership that Ms. Lobos has been able to provide along with administrators, you have really strong, committed principals in your district. And I'm not just saying that because most of them are here. Interestingly enough, your elementary is doing great. Your secondary schools, I rarely see, I always, elementary usually takes off as they're doing here, but I always see the secondary just stalls out, not here. Your three middle schools are very strong. Vicki, I'm a big fan of Vicki over there from McLaughlin. You hired a brand-new principal who's been able to come in and be a beautiful blend of supportive and, "Here's where we're going," as are your high schools. So, but I think that over time, what you're going to discover is some of the heroes that are slowly emerging are your instructional coaches. Your instructional coaches, one of who spoke, they're very much becoming empowered to really guide this work. So they're learning the work. Now what they got to do is learn how to lead the work. Some instructional coaches are holding back. They don't know if that's their place. Oh, man, how do I tell that team that they're doing it wrong, right? So we're teaching them that. But I think that over time, your investment in instructional coaches is going to be huge because they not only know this work, they know how to lead this work. And so a combination of administrative support and instructional coaches along with facilitators will allow that cross-pollination that you're seeking to happen.
That helps a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I like, teary-eyed, like three I times. And I know that might sound really funny, but it's true. This is a work that I have been behind for five years. But as someone who didn't have a lot of experience, I think, in leadership in this kind of a role, I think it was also probably the low point of my board. At a board meeting when I... At a board meeting, when I called all of the principals out for not being, how can I say this? Anyway, it wasn't a good moment because PLCs weren't happening like they should be. And the superintendent at the time was trying to prove to me that they were and how these things, these people come out. Well, I had kids in all three schools and was very involved. And I was very familiar with the fours methods. And, and realized that they were very far from it. Talked to lots of different teachers. They were miles from it, and yet they came in and told me how great everyone was doing. And then I told them that they were not being very truthful. So that was lousy leadership, anyway. But I've learned a lot since then. And this has been something that, that, you know, maybe you need to come teach us how to, maybe you come teach me how to be a better leader because I want to know how to better support this work. Everything that you have said speaks to my heart. And I am sorry that you've left your family on Disneyland.
Disneyland's very expensive. I'm happy I'm not there, so thank you.
Well, anyway, but I appreciate it because I loved hearing from you directly and, and what this work entails and the things that have really spoken to me. I'm also a teacher, so I see this from all points of view. And, and it, and it's frustrating when, there, there's just, anyway, I can go into almost every detail you've said, because it just speaks to my soul. But I love that this enables conformative assessments. And it, and enables us to, to get together and to, and to work together. Because when we can do that, that's what's best. One mind is not the solution. When we can get the best from many minds, that's when we move mountains. And that's what PLCs are about. But the hard part about PLCs is maintaining them.
That's right.
And, and we can get behind this. We, and, and just like you said, I've seen that fall apart at, at that level. When you take those standards and, anyway, and I don't remember all the terminology, but you take them apart, you try to figure out what you need, and you put that in, and then that's the end of it. And, and you haven't, you haven't really said, okay, this works, this doesn't. And let's get to the tweaking part. Because the tweaking part is where you get a machine that's running really incredibly. So I'm excited for this. I love the work you've done. And sometimes I feel like we, with, you know, dual language in all of our schools and the power that Avid has and PLCs and new curriculum that we've done too much to our stu, our teachers. I think PLCs are something that can help alleviate all of that. But in a teacher's mind, they also might be one more thing. So I worry about that, and maybe you can address that a little.
Sure.
And the other thing that I am worried about is how do we sustain viable PLCs? Teachers are some of the busiest people I've ever met, especially good teachers. They spend so much time that PLC time sometimes can be gold time to teachers who are already spending so many hours at work so that they can just prepare a little bit more. But as busy people, we often put too much effort into things that don't get great results. And PLCs are something that can give incredible results rather than, you know, cutting out all of these things or whatever.
Yeah, I agree.
So how do you, how do you sustain those? So those are my two questions.
Absolutely. First of all, thank you. And again, I'm honored to, to represent the amazing work that these teachers and administrators and staff have also had the honor of working with some of your security folks at the high school, with secretaries at your high school as they're trying to build their professional learning communities and what that means to them. So it's an honor. Okay, so one of the ways that we've described this work, you, you did a really nice job of describing how sometimes different initiatives become overwhelming, right? You mentioned dual language, Avid, professional learning communities, RTI. It seems to a teacher, especially in November, August, we're all ready to go, but November is a different story. It seems like there's different pieces. So one of the things we've described as leaders, one of the reasons why you have to have guiding coalitions, and this is the best image I can provide. It's like four fire hoses going off at once. And these four, these four fire hoses, one's called Avid, one's called dual language, one's called thinking maps, and the fourth one is called PLC, right? It's, the leadership has to grab all four of those, tie them together, and create what's called a single coherent focus on learning. I'm a big fan of Avid. There's no way you can convince me Avid doesn't work. They have data to back it up, for goodness sakes, that first-generation kids can benefit from Avid strategies. But a lot of what happens in the world of Avid can happen for all kids. So the job of the guiding coalition is to take these four different fire hoses and create, here are my three new favorite words, single coherent focus on learning. So rather than, a traditional school will simply say, you're doing Avid, you're doing this, you're doing that. A guiding coalition is going to say, no, no, no. Before we start passing that out, let's discuss it first and talk about how we're going to present it as a piece of a larger puzzle for our faculty and staff so that they understand exactly what this looks like, right? So that is going to be the role of the guiding coalition. That's what they're studying, and that's what they're learning. I think it's going to be very important to move forward. With regard to how you sustain this movement, last year's, last week, I presented to several teams. And the title of my presentation was, "How to Create a Movement, Not a Fad", for exactly that reason. So you're already doing things that should sustain this movement. It's not, I wouldn't say it's cemented yet. It's still, the cement's still kind of, it hasn't dried yet, but it's getting there. One is your investment in teacher leadership. Administrators will come and go. In a traditional school, this movement stops the minute a new principal comes in. So I think what you need to do at the district level and at the board level is make sure that those people that you are hiring as principals really understand this work and are willing to listen to their teacher leaders as a way of complimenting this work moving forward. So I often tell guiding coalitions, traditional schools do this. New principal comes in, teachers say, oh, well, well, let's wait and see what this person wants. What they need to do is they need to approach that new principal and say, hey, congratulations. You did great. Welcome to our school. Let us now show you how we increase learning continuously at our school. We'd love to hear how you're going to complement and support these efforts. That's a very different scenario. So your investment in something called teacher leadership, I think, is going to go a long way. I think it's important that, that these guiding coalitions be empowered to continue this work. And the way that you also sustain it is you continue to learn about it, right? The key to improve learning for students is job embedded learning for the adults. I would love to invite all of you, us members of the board, to attend a PLC Institute. There's one coming up, up in Seattle very soon that I would, and if you go, I'll, I'll be, I'll introduce you to all the people you need to, to meet. Mike Maddos, and all these amazing people from a company that I work for, a consulting company called Solution Tree. But they're going to be in Seattle. I would love for all of you to be there because I'm going to be doing some work in Muckleshoot pretty soon. Did I say that right? I got to get that right because I'm almost supposed to go there. But one of the most impressive things about Muckleshoot is that their board members have been attending every one of these institutes. And they're the ones that approached me and said, we need you to come and work with our, apparently that's an indigenous population that I'm going to have the pleasure of working with there in a couple of weeks. As those board members have become more empowered with this knowledge, they have created policies, they have created procedures and practices that are sustaining this after their tenure as board members are done. So they're creating structures that say, look, board members will come and go, principals will come and go, but this process is not going to leave. Because we know that this process of having more people working together than not is the key to making sure our kids continue to move in the right direction. That's how you sustain this movement.
So I'm Michelle Smith, and I'm a teacher over at New Horizons High School. And one of the things that I've seen very differently in this process, which I'd like to applaud the district on, is the fact that it wasn't like you have to go somewhere to learn this, right? If you go there, you will come back. You will be the golden child. And you will be the one who will go into your school buildings, and you will change it all. And that has been a problem that I've seen. I've been here since 2005. I've seen things come and go, and I have seen the Shiny Penny Club, and it's been wonderful. This has been, hey, there is something amazing that we want to bring to your building so that your building leadership can be the driving force behind this. It is not something out there that you will learn to bring back here. And then everybody should come to you because you're the one who knows it. It's very hard to be a prophet in your own land. And by bringing in Dr. Cruz into our buildings, by bringing in Maria Nielsen to work not just with the leadership there, but with the teachers and with the students and with the staff, right? It really has been a very different mindset, right? Because that means you're, that's an investment in your building, right? It's not an investment in Michelle Smith. And Michelle Smith gets to go and enjoy Seattle, and she enjoys all the restaurants, right? And then I come back and I share, right, with my building. But it's a very different vision for your staff when you come back and do that. And as a teacher leader, it, it's very helpful to, to have that support. Like, see, I told you. It's here, page five, right? It's very different, right? It's a very different conversation when someone else comes into your building. But then it's helping with the collaboration. I know that we've embraced it over at New Horizons. We gave up two days in our classroom as an entire building where we just sat down, and it was science, and it was social studies, and it was the health teacher. So it wasn't just ELA. Sometimes, right, when it's ELA and math, everybody else is like, oh, yeah, they got it. That was dangerous, right? But we're someplace else, right? And so it was nice to have that. Now we're having those different conversations about, so just talking about how to use cross-pollinate, right? So our social studies teachers were having a hard time getting kids to cite their, their sources as MLA in-text citation. We had that conversation as a whole staff out of PLC, how do we do that? Hey, by the way, we're going to have intervention on Friday. Only one or two of those will be an intervention on how to do in-text citation. Now the social studies department is getting that. Now the English department is in on that. And now the science department is in on that, right? Whenever a student goes to write their paper. It's very powerful when we're all together doing that. Instead of, well, that's a, that's an English thing. They do in-text citation. If it weren't for you guys, like, sitting around, you know, playing cards. I hear that's what a lot of us.
Oh, a lot of us.
Playing cards, that other things would be happening. So I just want to commend you guys for rethinking this idea about how do we change that PLC? Because I went to the first PLCs with Michelle, when she was my principal. We went, and we were like, yes, this is it. And then everybody else was like, oh, that's great, right? But when we brought it in together as a whole, we had everybody at the table going, what are you doing? What are you contributing? How are you doing that? And it was a completely different conversation.
I want to piggyback on what Michelle said. At Chihuahua, we have a lot of us that are, that are all in on this. And we have some skeptics. And I want to go to what you said about how we've been doing PLCs for a very long time and doing them wrong. And it wasn't due to any nefarious plan, it was just, we didn't know how. So we've had the why. And now we're getting some really concrete strategies in how to bring more people into the fold, how to not only unpack the standards. Because it would be, what is it, 23 years to learn all of the ELA standards? We can't. So we have to be really strategic about what we're doing. And so as Maria Nielsen says, that rising tide raises all ships. So everyone's instruction will get better. John has a design where he talks about the standard that we're going for, and here's our assessment. We're not saying that every teacher has to do it exactly the same way. And the power in that is when you get to the end, and Shelley has a 90% rate, and Leanne has an 80%, and I'm at 55, it's a really vulnerable conversation. But what do you guys do? I mean, I did what I've always done for the last 25 years, and apparently, I'm not real good at it. And so all of that rises. And having the leadership conversations with people where they're like, I can't do conformative assessments. I just don't have time. And, and saying, and feeling empowered, you know, as, as Dr. Cruz says, to look at them and say, so your kids are doing great, but this other teacher is struggling. So you're going to keep that a secret. So you're willing to sacrifice those 60 kids, is what you're saying? Well, no, that's not what I, well, then explain to me how you're not sacrificing those 60 kids. If you know how to help them be successful, and you're not sharing it with that teacher because you wait until that autopsy and summative assessment at the end, you're losing all those kids, and so you're sacrificing them.
Malpractice.
It was a difficult conversation, but one that was like, we have to engage this process. It's no longer, congratulations, Shelley, you're 90%. Fix, help me. You can't fix me, but you can help. I'm past fixing. But that's kind of where we are, and those are the conversations. And talking to people that are very resistant to this because it's changed. We've been doing this for 10 years. Having some of them say things like, you know, ultimately, this will make it easier because we'll have, they'll know where we're going instead of constantly trying to adjust, as Maria uses the boat, our island constantly changing, and we're all rowing in different boats, who are all in the same boat, rowing in different directions. It just makes it so clear. And so it's much better for kids. And that's ultimately the direction we're going.
And I love how so many of you have said about simplifying these standards. We can't teach them all. We have to teach them. And why not teach them so that we can teach these kids to mastery, so that they really understand them? Because usually, the peripheral stuff comes once you master
That's right. Very good.
the most important places. And if you don't give time for that reteaching, then you've lost a big chunk of the kids. So I, I just love, like, everything. It's awesome.
Michelle, thank you for reminding me New Horizons. I'm sorry, I forgot that name, so.
I have a question. And challenges you might see. So I, I'm not an educator, cater, I come from engineering. But a lot of the work we do looks like it's set up just like that. It's exciting. So you define your work, and then you do your work. And then you analyze it, research-based best practices, data, et cetera. And, and then you improve your work, and it's a wheel, right?
That's right.
It's a continuous learning process. It's really exciting to go define the work, which, I mean, you can see, people are excited when they get to go write down their, their statement right there. It's really exciting to go do the work when it's new. But a pitfall that I see, and it's not just our district, maybe it's in education, it's in engineering also, is when you get to the, to that part in the wheel where you got to go analyze it and assess it and say, what you did bad or what you did good, what's working, how you can improve, we get stuck, right? And, and the two, the two pitfalls I often see here is, one, we, we grab the data and we go, well, I don't know if we like this work or we don't like it. I don't know if this work has caused the improvement in whatever our SMARTboard is, whatever is miserable.
Good analogy, yeah.
Because we're, we're changing so many things. It's not just this. We change so many things. So I can't tell you the real impact of this work, you know, quantitatively. And so it becomes qualitative, like, I like it or I don't. It feels good or it doesn't. And if they like it, if people like it, they go, I like it, it probably improved, but we changed so many things, I don't know. Let's keep doing it. And then it kind of dies on the vine, right? Because people go, it's working. I've already defined the work, I've done it, I can't really improve it very much. Or the other pitfall is, well, I don't really know, you know? And it just, it can die multiple ways right there. So what would your advice be, once we get past the excitement of defining it, doing it the first time? Is it, is it people coming in and assessing and facilitating and help drive that?
Yeah. It's a great question.
To keep that momentum going around your circle so it doesn't die at that spot.
So one of the things that our teaching credentialing programs and administrative credentialing programs did not prepare us for was this.
Yep.
They didn't teach us how to analyze data. And if you went to one of those institutions, then you're blessed. Because when I was coming into the profession, this was not a topic of conversation. And unfortunately, the majority of teachers, this is still not. So one of the things you've heard mentioned is, you've heard the name Maria Nielsen mentioned. So my job was to sort of set the context for what we're about to do, to introduce them to this. But because my area of strength is in leadership, understanding the human dynamic that comes with resisting things like this, I advised the district to bring in someone who was very well-versed in stuff, and they did. So Maria Nielsen, my colleague, is helping teachers really understand every component of this. And in a couple of weeks, John is bringing in someone who's an expert with someone who doesn't share, we call them singletons. I'm the only person that teaches this in our school. I can't be part of a team. Well, actually, you can. That's not my, that's, see, that's not my area of expertise. So a friend of mine named Aaron Hampson is coming to your community to work with singletons, people who are the, I'm the only person. All of this is going to center around understanding that third big idea of a PLC. Those three big ideas I gave you. The first one is all kids, the second one, a collaborative culture. But the third one, there has to be evidence of learning. And it has to be quantitative, not just qualitative. Qualitative data is good. It gets down to the meaning behind these numbers. But in the end, I don't want a doctor telling me, well, I think your cholesterol is kind of high, but not really. You look good. I want you to tell me, is it high or not? Because if my triglycerides are high, I don't want to find out at my autopsy that I should have done something about this, right? So that piece right there is going to be critical. And that's the piece that my colleague Maria Nielsen is training faci- And that's the piece that my colleague Maria Nielsen is training facilitators and instructional coaches on.
And the SMART goal, measurable.
Exactly. So we want to make sure it's treatable. So my, I'm the son of a civil engineer. And when my dad would sit down at our, at our table to, to create his plans, he said, it's always fantastic when it's just me and the plans. But the minute I got to go in and talk to other engineers about this, that's when the adult drama hits, right? We also have adult drama in our profession. And it's getting through that adult drama. In Spanish, I call it the telenovela of schools, right? That's why the leadership part of this is so important. Because we might learn how to do that, but if we don't understand the dynamics of why people resist change and why, what people need to embrace change, the difference between uncomfortable and unreasonable, then this gets stuck. And all of a sudden, you're going to be inundated with people complaining about something